Three. One.
Welcome, everyone. Amy, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Dr. Asner?
Present.
Director Faulkner?
Present.
Director Goodman? Here. Director Morgan? Here. Director Pachra?
Here.
Vice President Brown? And President Cunial?
Here. Before we get started, this is September, and we're closing in on September 11th. I still remember the time when we had the school board meeting on September 11th. And I know it's not on our agenda, but if we could start with the pledge allegiance to the flag. We have a flag sitting back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who are on Zoom and watching, we may be, we will not take a break, but at some point, box lunches are coming. So if you're eating when this occurs and things are garbled, I apologize. But I'm going to ask everybody to eat. We'll just keep on going. Is that okay with everybody? All right. I think first off on this is our opening of schools update. Wendy?
Yes. Ms. Kennegras is going to be supporting the conversation with Dr. Campbell. He is supporting the school district in a medical perspective. So he will present to us, and Ms. Kennegras will also keep presenting some of our current data that we have to look at with the COVID stats. Yes, we're in the middle. So good evening, board. We are in the middle of unmuting Dr. Campbell, and as soon as he's ready, we'll start. Are you there, Dr. Campbell?
I am here.
Okay.
Well, the topic that I was asked to address was tonight was one that obviously is on everybody's mind every day right now, and that's COVID. And in particular, its impact on decisions revolving around the school year. So if we go to the next slide, I wanted to start with just some general considerations, community considerations, I would call them, for COVID. And the number one thing, everything else kind of is under this umbrella that we should focus on protecting people who are at increased risk for severe illness. We see lots in the news about the number of cases. And the issue is that for many age groups, healthy individuals in many age groups, it's really not a significant problem. And so we really need to focus on those age groups or those populations where the disease has shown to be severe and in many cases, unfortunately, even fatal. And so we're looking at older adults. These, the top two are the older adults and people with underlying medical conditions. Probably 80 to 90% of deaths have come in these categories. The, of course, when we're talking about schools, we're focused, we're wondering about children. And unfortunately, there's not a lot of data about this, but there is some concern that children who have medically complex underlying conditions, neurologic, genetic, metabolic, congenital, heart, et cetera, might be at increased risk for COVID-19 and severe complications of it. Again, I'm not worried about cases. I'm worried about severe complications of it. There was a study published in the Journal of Geriatrics that looked at the Italian experience with COVID. As you know, that was a country that was hit pretty hard. And they had a population of nearly 4,000 pediatric patients who were identified as being positive for COVID. It only represented less than 2% of the overall population that contracted COVID. About 5.4% of those had underlying conditions. Out of those 4,000, there were only four deaths. So a really small number. But those four deaths all had secondary, those four pediatric deaths all had secondary conditions. And of course, we'll talk about this later, but this is a particular issue for the special school district where your large percentage of your children have some of these underlying conditions. The other general condition, the other general consideration for the community is to emphasize personal responsibility. And I think this will come in as we talk about the school and the staff as well. You know, it's a matter of protecting yourself. Be your number one focus, whether, you know, with personal, with distancing, with masks and other protective equipment. And that whatever we're doing, we should target it to the population that we're dealing with. So in other words, blanket things that are not targeted at certain, at-risk populations are part of what we're dealing with in terms of the pushback from the community. You can go to the next slide. As we go to the specific school district considerations, obviously, we want to consider the safety of the children, the safety of the staff, the safety of the families, because if the children are being exposed, they may be carrying some things back to the family. Again, we'll talk, as we talked about, or as I will talk about, there's a lower-than-expected rate of transmission from children to adults. But we also have to consider the consequences of not having in-person learning. And our focus should be on the mitigation of risks. Okay, you can go to the next slide. So in general, children don't get very sick. The hospitalization rate is very low, around 1%. The mortality rate is very, very low. That still has a typo, and it should say less than 0.01%. Less than 100 nationally in this country have we had deaths of children, and zero in Missouri. So just some perspective on the risk of death in children. Go on to the next slide. Wendy? Okay. So again, our school district considerations, we also have to consider safety of the staff. We're going, Wendy will be talking a little bit later about the protective equipment that will be made available. And we do have some increased risk within the special school district in that our staff will have more exposure. And so the protection has to be, you know, whatever additional layers we can provide, because they will have increased exposure to respiratory secretions. Many of the children need to be suctioned. Many of them, you know, are, have normal nasal and oral secretions pretty much throughout the day. And of course, the safety of the families. And I think with any school district, we want, we don't want to take away personal choice. And so I would encourage any school districts to try and have an option, a continued option for virtual as we work through this, as a country, work through this better treatments and vaccine. We do have, as I mentioned earlier, the consequences of school closure. You know, adverse educational consequences are obvious. I think everybody, despite everyone's best efforts, recognizes that the virtual learning is not measuring up to what face-to-face learning is all about, as well as the adverse social and developmental consequences. And I'm talking about the pediatric population in general here. And again, we have to deal with the mitigation of risks through screening, social distancing, masks, and hygiene. Okay?
Dr. Campbell, we're going to, we missed the slide. Slide number four. Hi, sorry. Slide number five.
Oh, okay, sorry. Well, I think I covered it, but it's, and we can talk about the specific quote from the journal, the Journal Pediatrics, that children don't seem to transmit COVID very easily. The article, recent article in Journal Pediatrics included that they're just not very important drivers. There was a study from, a number of studies from other countries, a relatively small N in these studies. In other words, number of participants. But they, in those, they found very little transmission that they could account for as a result of going child to adult. The children that got it, almost universally, were getting it from an adult and not vice versa. Can we go back to that slide for just a second? I'm sure if I, back to five? Okay. Yeah, so again, and the Journal Pediatrics was stressing that serious considerations be given to keeping the schools open. Okay, you can go on. You can move forward. We'll go to six or wherever. I think we're all the way up to your part, Wendy, actually. Personal protective equipment, slide eight.
Okay. Staff screening. As we go through considering the topics and what we were discussing, what we wanted to look at is, we had started on our reentry plan back when we had not made the decision yet. So our plans at that point and continue to, we continue to evaluate our staff screening procedures. So employees should self-monitor from systems for the symptoms of COVID-19 at home before coming to work as outlined in our return plan to prevent transmission. Employees will be required to have their temperatures checked upon entry to the building. That's what's going on in our learning center. Our site's currently, right now, that seems to be working with a non-contact thermometer. Any staff who would then have a temperature of 100 degrees Fahrenheit or above would be considered as having a fever and will be asked not to return until the fever, until they are fever-free in accordance with the CDC returning guidelines. For students, a temperature check will be done prior to students getting on our bus. Any students with a temperature of 100 degrees or Fahrenheit or above will not be allowed to enter the bus. Temperatures of students that would be transported by family members or EMT or cab will be checked by staff at the front vestibules of all of our schools. If students are identified as having a fever at school, students will be given a mask if they're able to wear a mask. They will be placed in our isolation rooms. All of our schools have one, if not two, isolation rooms identified. And families will be called immediately to come pick up the isolated child. We also have all of the appropriate PPE for staff to wear during those isolation times and during the school year, school day. Any student with a temperature of 100 degrees or above will be asked not to attend school and not to return until fever-free for 24 hours without the use of fever-reducing medication or a note from their healthcare provider, such as a doctor, nurse practitioner, indicating the student may return to school.
Is there any rationale that must be given to return back to school? Just curious.
What's your question?
I'm curious. What would a healthcare provider indicate that they can return to school if they have a fever? I'm just curious.
So for students that might have an additional, run-of-high fever, may have another sickness that is not COVID-relate, ear infection, something that would be happening where they would be running a fever. I don't, in this time, and Dr. Campbell, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see doctors allowing kids to go back to school with a temperature higher than that.
Neither would I. That's why I was trying to figure out what they would allow.
But we wanted to say that just in case.
What last one? Go ahead.
Scenario that would lend to students having 100 degrees that's not necessarily related to COVID? Exercise, coming in from recess and having played and sweated. And so if they're, if they come in with 100 degrees, are they then considered to be isolated because they've come in from recess with now, you know, accelerated heart rates and temperatures?
I will rely on Dr. Campbell. He's the one that's some of that.
This screening, not that, not that there isn't roughhousing that goes on at the bus stop, but these screenings are mostly when you're entering school. And, you know, I don't think you can get into, you know, all the what-ifs. I think, you know, that you're talking about screening every single kid that comes through. You're going to have to have a cutoff point. And if the cutoff point is 100, then that's what it is. One of the things that, you know, initially, the guidelines from the CDC recommended that people be fever-free for three days. They backed off of that now, and it's still fever-free for 24 hours, which is kind of back to what we always did if a child was being sent home from school with a fever is that they had to be fever-free for 24 hours. And there's also, you know, kids are still going to get strep, and they're still going to get the flu. And, you know, they're still going to have fevers for other reasons as well. This is, fever is only a rough screening tool for COVID. But you have to, you know, you're doing the best you can in a difficult situation when you're trying to determine an entire population of schoolchildren, whether they're safe to come or not. So it's just a, it is just what it says, a screening tool. And the CDC, the CDC guidelines that you referred to at the bottom primarily would mean that they would have to be fever-free for 24 hours without the use of fever-lowering medication like Tylenol or Advil. Any other questions on that?
Thank you.
All right. So I wanted to, because I think you have a unique situation with the special school district. You know, most of the schools are, like, for example, Rockwood is considering sending, you know, kindergarten through second grade back. They're just trying to incrementally open things back up again. So it's not so much in the special school district, it's not so much a difference of by grade or age, but the fact that you have the large group of students that really do have some medical fragility, some underlying illnesses. You know, and so the other group, and we'll get to that on the next slide, the other, the other group being your technical students who don't really have medical fragility in the high school age. So the traditional SSD student who's medically, may often be medically fragile, you know, there's a lot of considerations, both to the staff, because they require so much more intense personal care, as well as to the student, because they do have this underlying risk. The flip side of that being that many of them are getting their most intense physical occupational and communication therapies in school. And those are things that really don't lend themselves to a computer monitor. So everything, everything is, I heard a great analogy last night that when you're always weighing risk and reality. And, you know, we would all be safer on the road if all the speed limits were 10 miles per hour. We would probably eliminate fatal traffic accidents down to a miniscule. But that's not the way we live. And so you're always sort of balancing the risk with the reality. And I think that's going to play into it as the districts begin to consider opening schools as well. Let's go to the next slide. The other population being your youth in technical schools, they're not medically fragile. And much of what they're doing and much of their curriculum really doesn't lend itself to remote learning. I toured South Tech with Alan Wheat a week or so ago, and we spoke with the principal and the assistant principal. And, I mean, they've come up with some incredibly creative things with cardboard models and things like that. But if you're, if you're there on a welding curriculum and you don't have a welding unit at home, there's not much you can do hands-on until you get back in the classroom, so.
Campbell, we have, Dr. Goodman has a question.
Yeah, I just have a clarifying question, maybe more for you, Wendy, which is, I mean, I don't disagree with the idea that we have medically fragile kids for whom things are at greater risk. But isn't that more like 25% of our population as opposed to the majority or an often descriptor?
Yeah, yeah. I don't have the direct percentage of students that would be considered medically fragile. But yes, they're.
Not the majority, it's not most often.
No. Yeah.
I think that's where you get into, you know, the family having input into it too. And the family may make the decision that, you know, you provide them with the information. This is what we're doing. There's still some risk involved. They have to make the decision if they're going to want to keep the child at home or send them. They can go to the next slide. So one of the things that I was asked to talk about was the, each week, you can go to slide 13. Each week, there's, the Education Plus, which is a not-for-profit organization. It's a collaboration of a number of area school districts, has been around for decades. And they have taken on the responsibility of sort of compiling data. So they gather data from the state and local health departments and put out their summary of key indicators. Currently, I think twice a week, and they're actually trying to get to the point of putting it out three times a week. And Dr. Keenan had indicated that she sends that out to the board. And it's, you know, it's about 13 pages, and probably the first page is all you need. And we'll talk about what the various indicators are. So we can go to the next slide. There's really three things that they, that they're following, that the public health folks are following. One is in terms of new cases. Again, remembering a case is just a positive test. It doesn't mean illness, doesn't mean, you know, significant illness. It doesn't mean hospitalization. It doesn't mean that. It's just a positive test. They follow it on a day-by-day basis, but you can, there are lots of ups and downs. And sometimes the ups and downs are very artificial. It was just some area, it wasn't St. Louis, but some area just had, you know, like yesterday, five times what they'd ever had before. Well, the problem was there were some tests that sat on, you know, and hadn't been, hadn't been run. And they ran a bunch, you know, for a few days, I guess, because of the holiday. And then they ran them, and all of a sudden, it's like, all of a sudden, it's, the previous high was 1,000, and now it was 5,000. So they create the seven-day rolling average to try and even that out a little bit. And that's one of the things that you'll want to, you'll want to follow. The transmission rate is reported. It's called the R0, or the reproduction rate. It's a measure of how, how quickly or how the ability of the illness to spread. And it's like calculating it, it's like a black box, because it's, there's not a simple calculation to figure out the R value. So you almost have to sort of take what they give you and, you know, and accept it as the R value. But the bottom line is, think of it in terms of, if every person who has it infects one other person, then the R value is one. Okay? So an R value greater than one means that the disease is spreading exponentially. Every one person is giving it to two, and those two are giving it to four, and those four are giving it to eight. So you're shooting for an R value of less than one, because if you have an R value of less than one, the thing will eventually peter out. Each person who has it is not even giving it to one other person. And then the positive, I'm sorry?
We lost you on audio. Could you start at daily news? We picked up on, but the daily new cases, we lost you on that.
Well, if you lost me on that, you're going to lose me. You're going to lose me again, probably, on transmission, even if you can hear me. So, so the daily, daily transmissions reported on this report. And again, there are lots of fluctuations in that. Sometimes they're artificial fluctuations in the sense that it was just, just in the last 24 hours, it was an area outside of St. Louis. But they were reporting a daily, a daily case rate of like five times anything they had had before. Well, the issue was that some tests. Can you hear me now? Hello? I'm not hearing anything. Is anyone hearing me?
I can hear you, but I'm also at home on Zoom.
Now I'm hearing a little crowd noise again.
Okay, we can hear you.
Hear me? Okay. I didn't know if it was crowd noise, real crowd noise or crowd noise that was being pumped in, like at the baseball games. But, okay, so we'll try one more time. On daily new cases, it's simply a count of positive tests. And again, positive test doesn't necessarily mean severe illness. They're just simply counting. It is one indicator. And there's great variability in that because, you know, if, for example, it just happened in the last 48 or 72 hours that one community reported this extremely high jump in new cases, and it turned out that it was really the fact that the lab had held on to some tests that they didn't have time to run, then they ran them all one day, and it was a really high rate. So that's why they created the seven-day rolling average that kind of works that through a little bit. And your, your summary of key indicators that Education Plus puts out reports the running total of the seven-day averages, and it's probably the best way to follow the number of cases. Transmission rate, what I was saying earlier when no one was hearing me was that the calculation of this is sort of a black box. They, the gentleman at Education Plus sent me an article on how to calculate the R value, but it didn't, didn't really say. It's basically a look at all the statistics to see how the disease is spreading. And the important thing to know about the transmission rate is that if every person who has the disease gives it to one other person, just one other person, then that's an R of one. Okay? So we want that number to be less than one. If it's greater than one, the disease is spreading exponentially. If it's less than one, it's petering out. Okay? The positivity rate is simply a ratio between the number of positive tests divided by the number of tests that have been done. And I, we can go to the, to the next slide. One of the things that factors into all of these calculations is how the testing is being done. So think about it. If you're looking at, you're trying to calculate the positivity rate, you want to know out of every test you do or out of every 100 tests you do, how many of them are coming back positive? What if you're testing symptomatic people? But the people in the next county are testing anybody who wants to be tested? Just, oh, man, I, I'm curious about that. I think I'll go down and get a test. So you're testing asymptomatic people. Or in some cases, for example, one of the things that my group is heavily involved in is we work with a number of shelters. Well, as shelters have opened back up, their due diligence is to test people who are coming in. So I'm testing a lot of asymptomatic people, and we're getting a very low positivity rate. But that's because we're testing asymptomatic people. So you have to just kind of take all those with a little grain of salt, because you don't know all that's going, going into a certain test, testing method. Okay. I think the next slides kind of break down, but I've already kind of talked through this a little bit. The new cases are reported several different ways. They're reported as cumulative cases, so it looks like a huge number, but it's only a couple hundred more than yesterday because they're just adding, continuing to add it on. I was talking in here about how it was being reported. But again, I think I'm going to focus, have you focus on the very first page, and we have a copy of that in the last slide. You can go to the next slide. Again, that, I also thought, they told me that the report was going to be the same week after week after week. And then I saw that after I made the slides and referred to certain pages, that they had changed the report. So you can ignore this, except for the fact that page one is the important part. We talked about the R value, that an R value of one means that every person who gets it infects just one other person. And if it's greater than that, it's spreading exponentially. If it's less than that, it's petering out. Next slide. And the positivity rate. Now, so if it, if it isn't arbitrary enough, then it's like, well, how do you interpret this? All right, at 8.1. What they have decided is they've kind of labeled him in this, in this report, green, yellow, red. And green. And green is if that, if we get the positivity rate down to less than 5%, and red is if it exceeds 10%. And yellow obviously is in between 5 and 10. So, but what that means in terms of, you know, it's, there's no hard science to say, oh, well, okay, now it's less than 10, we can do, we can go back to school, or we can open up the bars, or whatever. There's no, you know, it's a bit arbitrary. It's not being presented as arbitrary, but it's a bit arbitrary. Okay. Last slide. I think. Yep. All right. So, here's what the front page of, of the report that Dr. Keenan is sending out to the board members, the summary of key indicators. So, focusing on St. Louis County, you can see across the top, it says the rate per 100,000, so it's not a total number. It's given as a, as a rate. It is a seven-day average. So, we know that we've kind of smoothed out the, the high points and the low points that may be a result of a holiday or testing when they ran the test. But you can see right in these last few days, up until the last day here being reported, the end of August, the number was creeping up, and that's not what we want to see happening. We don't want to see the rate per 100,000 creeping up. So, it went from, you can see these are weeks that overlap one another too, right? So, it's a seven, it's not like seven days, and then the next seven days. It's seven days starting on Monday, and then seven days starting on Tuesday, and then seven days starting on Wednesday. So, it's, it's, it really does smooth it out pretty well. You can see the good news is the transmission rate is less than one, but I mean just barely less than one. And the positivity rate back when this test was, I think this is the report from September the 2nd, was still at 8.1%. Any questions about those numbers?
Are we going to be opened up back?
Nobody knows. Let's keep the data show. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. No question.
Okay. All right. So, I'm signing off then, is that all right?
Sure. Yes.
All right. Before we go to the next one, I would ask everybody to go on out, pick up the lunch. I believe they're right outside the door, and then we'll just come right back and continue.
I'm in a break.
Wendy, it's all yours.
Oh, thank you. Again, yet again. Good evening. We are going to update the board on opening up schools. I am Wendy Penras, Chief Academic Officer. You have Peter Riddle, Executive Director of Partner District. Kelly Grigsby, Executive Director of Schools and Programs.
Kevin Andrew, Executive Director of Career and Technical Education.
So, what we will be discussing tonight is what our student engagement looks like with our virtual schooling and participation, the technology support that we worked with our families and students, and will continue to work with our families and students, our mail programs, our speaker series at our tech schools, and our school and district visits. Doug Austin, our Chief Technology Officer, will also be joining us this evening as well. That's well.
Oh. Student engagement and interventions at SSD schools. Our principals are submitting, or our teachers and related service staff are submitting engagement data to our principals, who are then summarizing and submitting to us by School Weekly. We are identifying and problem-solving barriers to engagement and participation, working with families. Some of the interventions we're using include call home, home visits, virtual family conferences, and then as needed, collaboration with children's division courts, and then welfare checks if we are unable to make contact or there's anything of concern.
All right. So, for the technical schools, similar to SSD schools, our staff are submitting student participation levels weekly, and then staff are contacting students and families who are not participating to determine barriers and what we can do to overcome those barriers or challenges. Additionally, many of our programs have developed student resource kits for those, for their individual programs. For students and families who are not able to pick up their student resource kits, we've made arrangements for those to be delivered to students and families, so they don't have to come to school if they're not able to make the trip. And then we're using many of the same interventions that you're seeing in the SSD schools. So, we're using our social workers, we're using every possible phone number that we have to reach families. One thing that's a little bit different with the technical One thing that's a little bit different with the technical high schools as well, for our half-day students, we're also leaning on our partner districts to help us, because in some cases, they may have more up-to-date contact information than we do, or they may have had luck reaching a student and family that we have not yet been able to reach, and so we've been using them in the communication process as well.
Regarding partner districts, a cohort of directors and lead area coordinators worked collectively to develop a process flow to capture student engagement. We're looking at 22 districts versus a smaller portion of students such as our SSD and tech schools, and so we wanted to ensure that we had a process that could support small districts, but also large districts such as Rockwood and Hazelwood and districts that are much larger. So the process flow will include examples of expectations for participating in lessons each week and instruction, reasons why students may not have participated, what actions the case manager and teachers will take to support those scholars who have not participated in instruction, and then a result of the teacher and our team actions. And so we wanted to have a collective approach to support this process.
This is Director Goodman. Could each of the three of you give us the numbers of what the level of engagement has been?
Sure. I can share with you that of the 22 school districts during, we've had 15 school districts that reported the week of August 24th, and we had six districts that reported to school the week of August 31st, and one started today, and that was Normandy School District. Today, four of the districts, my partner district administrators were able to provide information. We just worked collectively last week to finalize the document, we're wanting to use Qualtrics to pull that information. From the information that I've gathered, about 82.5% of the students in our partner districts, looking at four schools, did participate in distance learning to some extent. Specifically, Aspen had 75%, Bayless 82%, Hazelwood 86%, and Valley Park was 86%. So looking at those four schools overall, districts overall, it was about 82.5%.
What about the children? So for the technical high schools, the past two weeks, as far as students participating, at least doing one assignment or engaging in one lesson, it's been above 90% both weeks. First week was about 93%, second week was right at 90%. Both for the last two weeks, 78% of our students have completed 80% or more of the assignments, so that means they've done four of five assignments, and they've participated in all the live sessions that have taken place during the week. And keep in mind, during that window, we have partner districts that just came back, like Normandy just started school today. We also had partner districts that were starting later last week, and we were working through device issues, where we were still getting computers in the hands of students, still getting hotspots out to families, because those showed up last week. So with all those hurdles, we're really proud of those numbers to this point.
In the SSD schools, our numbers have been increasing. We have two weeks of data. This past week, we had at least 67% of our students participating in at least one activity online, and 55% completing 80% of their distance learning. What we don't have and accounted for yet is pen and paper tests, so any families that opted not to access computer-based instruction are using pen and paper tabs manipulatives. We have not received that work yet. We're also carrying students that we have not made contact yet, that's why we're using the home business in other ways. So we are carrying a percentage of students that may or may not be residing with us anymore.
Dr. Koonu? I'm sorry. Some of the identified barriers that I believe are in seeing, looking at data from tech and from SSD schools as well as partner districts, they include the number of online sessions in a lot of the partner districts, parent work schedules, and being able to support their scholars while they're at home, technical issues such as logging in, accessing materials and such. And interventions that we were able to capture included simple phone calls just to remind families, parent support, social work support, home visits, praise, student recognition, weekly check-ins, as well as office hours to support them.
Dr. Koonu, do you think it would be possible that we would request, maybe in the status reports that we get, have that as one of our reports?
Yes, that's what we're planning on doing. We're going to do it after the Labor Day, so that we can generate a year, I mean, a week data.
Okay.
So we're going to be putting that in our, when we talk to the district leadership team, we're going to submit it to me by Wednesday, so we can submit it to you guys by, on the Friday night.
Okay, the percent of participation.
Yeah, and then while they're doing what the students.
Okay, great.
And this is Uvalas, we're speaking here. I might, it sounds like we have the capacity to break it down even further, saying, for example, how many of the students are participating at one level? For example, 55% getting 80% of their work done.
Yes.
That data would be helpful as well, as opposed to just how many students participated.
So we've been distributing a lot of equipment over the last several weeks to all of our students. These numbers have changed a little bit since we put this together to include in the board packet. We have distributed 789 Chromebooks to students in our buildings, tech schools, and as well as some of our purchase-of-service sites where we have students also participating in remote learning. The hotspots provided, that's gone quite a bit up, so actually distributed 341 hotspots to date, with, we still have about four hotspots that are scheduled to be delivered, but haven't been picked up yet.
Are we having troubles getting hotspots? Are we having troubles getting Chromebooks? I'm reading in the papers and the news that right now, they're a scarcity.
Both, yes, we have outstanding orders for both Chromebooks. We are participating in St. Louis County's digital equity program through the CARES Act, so we are going to receive an allotment of hotspots from St. Louis County Library starting this week to cover any outstanding hotspot requests we have. And we have an outstanding order of Chromebooks that we're waiting on delivery, that we've been waiting on delivery since July.
I applaud you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
I just see this as a stopgap measure.
Yeah.
At some point, kids need to be in school.
Absolutely.
And what I would really like at some point is, and I know they suspended all testing right now, I would like testing just to have baselines, to know how much, you know, in a year's time, I can't expect, or within a semester's time, I cannot expect this to be like a normal game, and I'd like to know how far we're behind, not knocking a teacher, not knocking anybody, but just having it as a baseline of where to go next.
Absolutely. So we've also been coordinating with some needs throughout students that are actually attending partner districts, or receiving services from special school districts, so we've distributed, these numbers have gone down quite a bit. We only have 45 outstanding device requests that we're scheduling for pickup now, when we only have seven hotspots that haven't been picked up from the partner districts. And we have deployed different, various other types of equipment. One of the things that I call out here is, we have some students that are part of our DUTT and Heart of Hearing Program, where the Chromebooks, they were issued from their partner district, the screen was too small for them to be able to properly see the sign language interpreters as part of their instruction, so we provided them with large-screen monitors to attach to those devices, so they could properly see the sign language interpreters. And more of those requests come in. As we identify those needs, again, we coordinate with the technology departments from the other school districts to find out what the need is, and what we can do to supplement any technology needs that students have.
What's the strength that the providers are providing for individuals who may be new to the services, meaning AT&amp;T and Spectrum? I know that I myself have encountered where my signal strength in Zoom did not permit for my voice to carry in reference to response. So I'm wondering, is there a certain level of signal strength that AT&amp;T and the providers that we're asking to provide are providing? How's that working in reference to the amount of connectivity that students are getting?
Especially in the terms of hotspots that we're providing, it really does depend on the area that the students reside. Some areas are further away, or have a lot of obstruction between themselves and the nearest cell tower that the hotspots provide the data connections for. So, you know, we're using both AT&amp;T and T-Mobile hotspots that we're deploying to students. They have, you know, various coverage areas in the county. We're hoping with those two carriers, we can get the most of those. And I have been working with Charter Communications with Spectrum Internet Access, so in areas where we cannot provide a hotspot, or the hotspot does not have connectivity, we have that as an option to try to provide access, as long as, again, it's within the Charter Communications coverage area as well. So we're trying various, various things.
So Dr. Koonu, I think that your question, in reference to trying to find what types of gains or losses that we find ourselves experiencing in delivering the services to our kids, that too will have, play a large role in reference to that particular information, because you're looking at certain portions of the communities that may not have the signal strength, and therefore, it's got to be able to affect the ability for those homes to be able to get the services even adequately as they're being delivered.
I noticed that your highest percentage is at North Tech.
Right.
Is there a reason why, percentage-wise, the chance they have hotspots? Is that because of what North Tech requires when, in their programming, or is that?
So it's twofold, really, why the numbers are elevated at North Tech. So first off is, we do have a full-day student population there, so they're not getting devices from the partner districts, so we are committed to providing those students with resources. And then second is socioeconomic factors of the students who are enrolling at North Tech, but the communities that we serve, there is a high level of student need in the population that we serve, and so that increases the number of device requests that we are receiving.
It wasn't so much the devices, which was the student hotspots.
The hotspots, right, because all of our full-day students, it's not counted in the total there for devices, all of our full-day students were already getting a Chromebook from the district, so that didn't reflect in the device request numbers, because that's already just standard student issue as a part of our one-to-one program at North Tech for full-day students. So many of those full-day students already had a device, but what they didn't have was reliable home internet connection.
Thank you.
I guess I have an additional question, and this may be very difficult to assess, but do we have a sense of how many, you know, we talked about 67% of students, meaning 33% of students, did not get engaged in school in the last couple of weeks. Do we have a sense of how much of that are actual barriers to access, as opposed to just a lack of the need for effective, for whatever reason, because our kids aren't getting?
We can drill down that data even further. I can ask for a couple additional data points from our principals to get the teachers on specifying which ones are not participating in virtual at all, and just participate in paper and pencil, and then who are having issues still with technology. I really believe we've solved the majority of the technology issues with regards to getting devices to families in hotspots, so at this point, we have to reflect how many are paper and pencil, and then how many are just are not able to, are not, are choosing not to engage as well, or are not residing in the district. We still print the teeth out.
Like you mentioned, for outstanding requests for actual devices themselves, we're down to 45 devices that are needed to be distributed to students, but that number kind of changes because we identify additional students that have needs, or, again, with partner district, students that might require some additional technology support, that may go up as well, but those are being handled and scheduled, and pickups are being coordinated with our families for those. Hotspots were down to seven that are scheduled to be picked up, but they just have not been picked up yet. And then Charter, a little misleading, not really, hotspots from Charter Communications is actually Charter Spectrum connectivity kits. And so, like I mentioned before, in places where we cannot provide connectivity via hotspot because of the coverage area, but Charter Communications can provide connectivity, we're going to provide them with a wireless cable router, so that they can connect into the internet from those locations. And then the last point here is to kind of help our families with utilizing this equipment for the first time and accessing our materials that we're providing for distance learning. We have established a family technology support desk, where families can call in, and we field questions that range anywhere from how to engage the Zoom meetings, how to access the Zoom meetings, how to use Zoom, how to access the Google resources that we have in Google Classroom, or even just how to use or how to get onto the Chromebook itself.
I've got another question in reference to cost of these services. I know that many of these companies are predicating their cost on bundling. Do we have an idea as to what the average cost is being charged, if in fact that the only service you're trying to get is the internet service for the purposes of education?
Yes, so it's, for the hotspots from AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, the cost of the hotspot itself is included in the package, and it's a $20 per month, per device, recurring charge for the service. And that goes over a full year of coverage for each of those. And for the Charter Communications, it's $29.99 per month. The wireless router is included in the cost for that, and it's a self-installation. Uninstallation charges beyond self-installation kit would be an additional charge.
So are these the individual prices, or is that the price given if you bundle?
That's the price that they're quoting for these host services that we're providing. It's all based on an educational government contract that they have with the state of Missouri. All right, so the next thing, so this is an exciting thing that we've started during this period of remote learning, which we're calling Tech Tuesdays. So this started off as an idea based off some things we've seen around the country as far as best practices, where other districts and states were offering speaker series around topics to really bring work-based learning back to students, where students are working in a remote setting. So we wanted to replicate that for special school district. So every Tuesday between now and December 15th, we're going to alternate between colleges and universities and business industry partners, where every Tuesday, they're holding a session where students have the opportunity to log in, and it's a 30-minute to an hour session, where they're having them do a set presentation, and then do a Q and A at the end, where students are able to ask questions about anything they want, about the company, about the business, or to the college/university, the admissions process, program-specific questions, all those different pieces. And so, we had our first one last week, we had about 60 students and teachers log in to stream it live, and that included some teachers who were watching it live with their whole class. So even though 60 people were watching it, that number was actually amplified by teachers watching it with their whole class live, and then we had about 100 students and families access it after the fact. This began as an idea and opportunity for students at North and South Tech, but we really wanted to expand that to include our students in our SSD buildings, as well as students in our VSP program as well. So this is really an open invitation to any student that's in SSD schools or programs who are interested in learning more about these businesses, these companies, or these colleges and universities. And then after the sessions are done, they're recorded, and we share it back out, so anybody who wants to access it after the fact has the opportunity to do that as well. And so, even if we return to in-person, at some point later on this semester, as we anticipate, our ability to bring guest speakers into our buildings will be limited, we're going to continue in this format to ensure students are still getting those opportunities they would have normally gotten in a face-to-face setting.
What time of day does that run?
So we're running it every Tuesday at 2:00 PM. The reason being is, 2:00 PM, most of our instruction is done by the end of the day, by 2:00 PM, and so any student that wants to access it can. So even though our juniors normally attend us in the morning, by 2:00 PM, their schedule is usually open to be able to log in and jump in.
So do we have a listing of the speakers?
Yes, so we have a full list, broken down, that I could provide. Watlow Electrical, St. Louis Community College, Harris Stowe, the various apprenticeship programs, St. Louis Auto Dealers Group, Women in Auto Collision. We're really trying to make sure that we're hitting groups in every different cluster that we cover, Cyber Up and Worldwide Technology on the IT side. So we're alternating basically every week between different clusters. And in some cases, we're having students log in, like BJC today, BJC wasn't just talking about careers in healthcare, because BJC hospitals include IT, they include jobs in maintenance and construction, they have their own 911 dispatch running through Christian Hospital, and so the big chunk of the students that tuned in today for BJC were in our law enforcement program, because they were interested in the opportunities in dispatching and security. program because they were interested in the opportunities in dispatching and security. So we really were focusing on those larger companies that can touch a wide variety of careers that are all covered within the area of career and technical education.
How do we get the information for this out?
So right now it's being shared through our social media channels, it's on our calendars for our websites, and then our individual teachers are inviting students as things become relevant. So especially like if I'm a teacher in the early childhood education program, BJC today might not be overly relevant, but when we get to Harris Stowe, that'll be a very relevant opportunity for those students. So we're relying on that as well as periodic emails to students and families as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
In addition to some of the other things we talked about, we are also providing a meal program for our students in the SSD schools and technical schools. So what that consists of is for students who want to participate, we're offering a free of charge. It's five meals, breakfast, five breakfasts, five lunch. It's delivered on, or it's provided on one specific day that they can pick up before the entire week. If they are not able to access the food by picking it up, we do have delivery routes that we've established. So this week we started delivering, last week we started pickup. Again, it's offered for students in our schools, it's free of charge, and we're working with our business and finance department and transportation to make that accessible for all of our students.
I think this is a great idea. Is this budgeted? Did we budget this?
Well, that's the money man.
We didn't budget specifically for this, but it'll be offset by what we would have budgeted for paying for lunches for students anyway in the schools.
No, I think this is, I think it's a great idea. If we let this out in the community that we're doing this, I first I would, this is a great idea.
And as of the time when we submitted the presentation, we had 400 families participating. I believe that number has gone up.
That's fantastic. Be nice to get some PPR.
Okay. Now, is it, any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Director Goodman, I was just wondering if there had been discussion or interest in doing a check-in with, with both families, students and staff to see how the online learning is going for them to get some feedback.
So doing a survey or checking in with them weekly? Okay, we'll work on that.
We have a session with families regularly.
Yeah.
But we do intense surveys.
Yes, and then with staff, we have started a series that we, we have created a series that will start hopefully next week that will allow us to communicate with our staff within the district, and we're calling this project Let's Talk Series 2.0. And we're going to meet with each partner district, the staff, as well as the parents. And then we're going to also do the same thing with families. And this will allow each district to have additional communication with our, the administrators here at Special School District, but also for us to have ongoing communication and feedback between our families and as well as our staff. This has been a very difficult start of school for anyone who's been in education, and we receive, whether it's positive and or negative, we take it as an opportunity to learn and grow, and we want to continue to do that, and so we plan to do that on a quarterly basis.
Would it be possible to share those results with the board? The reason why is the board gets copies of emails. I'm guessing most people are not going to email the board if things are, if they're happy.
Right.
And the vast majority of emails I'm getting are, this is all failing. Now, I'm not telling you that's true. I, I would like to see, though, with a wider representation, because I think I'm getting a real skewed sample.
We can absolutely get.
And we, we do receive the same concerns through Let's Talk, and we respond to them, again, whether they're positive and or negative. Additionally, we are very transparent. We are in, in schools and in districts. As a matter of fact, today, my first visit was to a partner district just to welcome staff back, just to observe based on concerns and information that we have received. And so we want them to know we are listening and we will find to ensure that we are addressing all concerns.
If you're doing a Survey Monkey or if you're doing whatever, can we as a board get copies of that too?
Absolutely.
I, right now, all I'm seeing is negative.
We have received, I can tell you, we have received positive emails. We will start sharing those as well.
Can we see those?
Yes, we will, we will start sharing those as well. I did want to mention to both Director Koppner and Dr. Cunio, we are doing assessments. So you had mentioned that earlier. In our district assessment plan, we will be doing virtual assessments with our students so we can start measuring, getting an idea of what's being.
You know, I'm not, again, I'm, I'm impressed that we're doing what we can do.
Yes.
Except in the long run, I worry about people in our vote programs that are in cosmetology or in welding. They're not going to learn that over, over the internet.
We've had some very creative ways that you would be surprised how much they are learning, but I'll let our conversations with our teachers and our families speak for themselves.
I'd love to hear that. Thank you.
Great. Any other additional questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Good evening, Board Directors. Amy Schechter, Chief Human Resources Officer. I'm going to take this on the shift down COVID to CSIP. So I'm going to share with you tonight an update on CSIP Goal 2, which is Workforce Excellence. We have really pared down, as we've talked about in our other CSIP presentations that were led by Dr. Bauer in the spring, and then I know Ms. Pendergrass referenced when she did her update last month as well, that really trying to focus on some very narrow strategies and action steps. So in our Workforce Excellence Goal 2, we only have two strategies compared to the five that we had previously, with action steps of seven and scheduled completion of 2022. Next slide please. So those two strategy, the goal is to establish and maintain an effective and supportive workforce environment that engages staff to operate optimally to facilitate student success. And our two strategies under that goal are really to implement programs to increase retention and recruitment for staff in all programs, and then also to increase the percentage of diversity among all staff, inclusive of our administrators, our teachers, and our other support staff based on appropriate labor demographics for the St. Louis region, for the state of Missouri, and the Midwest region. So when we're looking at implementing programs to increase retention and recruitment for all staff, we really want to focus in our action steps, first and foremost, on utilizing our student teaching placements really as an avenue for employment and recruitment. We really want to focus in on getting as many student teachers as we can in the region to do their student teaching within special school district, at our SSD schools, our technical high schools, or within our classrooms in the partner districts. It's really important, if you look at DSE's data, I was just on a Zoom meeting end of last week with Paul Katnake, Assistant Commissioner of Education for DSE, and they're continuing to show that downward trend. The last six years, there's been a decline in ed prep, ed preparation program enrollment in the colleges in the state of Missouri. And they've seen a steady increase in the number of students that don't complete that program. So now, when we look at 20 to 30% of the students that enter an education preparation program in the state of Missouri do not complete it, they switch majors to something else. The other piece of that, that the, the current pandemic really has focused on this as well is that we have to think about how student teaching takes place. I know it was one of Director Goodman's questions in my presentation or in, with the MOU in the last meeting about what does that student teaching look like? And we really have to look at the student teaching that took place this past spring was incomplete in a lot of respects. Because really when it got to the point where the student teachers would have taken over and done a great deal of learning, some of that didn't happen, and if it did happen, it happened in a very different way with it being virtual. So DSE is also compiling a list of areas that they feel are areas of improvement the district should address with any first-year teachers that they hired and some guidance that they're providing. So continuing to look at that and work with our mentors. We also want to partner with our local and state universities really to build relationships for more than just teachers. We have a lot of local universities that, that do a wonderful job in preparing other, other areas with like our IT as an example, and then also looking to see what we can do to encourage individuals who may be studying in that social service field to seek out paraprofessional positions while they're in the pool. And then utilizing the voice of customer to, to identify opportunities that improve working conditions across all job categories. So being able to focus on retention, how, how do we keep them? So when we're looking at our progress and planning, as far as recruitment, our current fill rate, 100% of the teacher vacancies in the district are filled. We have 99.71% of our related service staff are filled, 98% of our administrators, and just a little over 91% of our paraprofessionals. One of the issues with the paraprofessional fill rate, as you are aware, the district implemented a hiring freeze for paraprofessionals that we are slowly lifting as we have areas in the, in St. Louis County that are returning to school. And so we are starting to hire paraprofessionals in order to fill vacancies in those areas. Like someone referenced earlier, Rockwood is planning to return its in-person learning for all students K2. And so we currently have a posting on our website specifically seeking paraprofessionals for Rockwood K2, partly because some of those schools in Rockwood are so far away from other parts of the county, and it is elementary. So really hoping to fine-tune when we're doing our postings so people know what they're applying for. Our retention data should be compiled by the end of next week, and so we can bring that back and share it with the board like I did last year. And what we really want to do with that is not just share the data, but really look at it and, and zero in on specific areas in the county. Where are we having a difficult time keeping teachers? And if we can drill down to the building level and really start to do some targeted investigation as to what is it that is occurring there that we can address? Next slide please. So we want to increase the number of MOUs, Memorandums of Understanding, that we have with the colleges and universities for our student teaching practical internship placements. We also want to develop a system to collect staff concerns, and really to collect those staff concerns based on what is the actual concern, not just an overall, I'm unhappy, the morale is low, the climate is poor, but to specifically look at what is causing that. And so some of our work will be on developing that system. And then the second part of that will be developing a process that we can implement action steps to address those areas that are identified. We also need to create and implement a new exit survey process. We currently don't get very good results with our exit survey because we send an email link to Survey Monkey after people separate from the district, and so it's kind of up to people to choose whether or not they do that. And so looking more specifically on how we can improve that, and then what we can be looking for data-wise so that we can use that data to determine areas that are needed for improvement.
So do we have a process right now? Is that, is it the Let's Talk or what is it we use where people can send their concerns now, right?
They do, but oftentimes those are submitted anonymously, and so you can address it, but you don't know where it's coming from. So I don't know if it's coming from an SSD school, I don't know if it's coming from a partner district, I don't know if it's coming, I don't know what level of staff member it's coming from. And so it's just kind of a random response, but we don't really have any solid data to talk about what specifically is going on in that location or with that supervisor or, you know, within that partner district that we could address in order to, to deal with the, the issue. And really, Let's Talk is more reactive, and I'd like to be more proactive.
I have a question on that, too. I guess I brought this up the last couple of years. Is there any way that we can do that same Survey Monkey to find out why people stay? I mean, to me, we only look at the ones that leave. I'd like to know why they stay.
Yeah.
Is, is it, you know, is it the money? Is it insurance?
Right.
You know, the, the time, is it, what is it? What keeps them here?
Okay.
I'd like to know that because.
We can fill that in.
If we're going, but that would be, I mean, we always focus on the individuals that left. I'd like to focus also on the individuals that stay. Especially with their paraprofessionals.
Oh, and Dr. Keaton and I did our listening tours with paraprofessionals last year, that was one of the questions that we asked.
Yeah, why do you do it? Why'd you stay another year? I think that could be very interesting to do.
Go to the next one. So our next strategy is to increase the percentage of diversity among staff here at Special School District. And our action steps there is really, we have to start by identifying three years of staff demographic data according to each of the job groups. We presented demographic data to the board in February. We are compiling that to present that again. And then starting to utilize local advertising to target diverse applicants, communicating our current vacancies to college and colleges and universities that attract a diverse population. So looking at the historically black colleges and universities, not only in our area, but in more of the Midwest area. And then one of the, the key things that we need to start doing is utilizing local high schools as an opportunity to showcase careers in special education. We really have the perfect opportunity through our Special Olympics events, but also in developing some job fairs and some volunteer opportunities within our schools to get students interested in the field of special education while they're still in high school, instead of waiting for them and hoping that they select it as a major when they're in college. Some of that will be obviously on hold considering that most local high schools aren't open and are slated to be the last of the groups to be phased in, and even if they are open, I doubt they're allowing many visitors to come in and interact with our students. I wanted to include some diversity data that we have on race, really looking at the areas that we have identified with SSD, DSE representing the state, our St. Louis County region, and the Midwest region. And you can see that, you know, our, our employees are primarily white, which we have more diversity than this, the state and the Midwest region, but we're looking at the population of St. Louis County, our staff don't equally represent the families that live in St. Louis County. So it is an area that we do need to focus on increasing our diversity. We move to the.
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, you're fine.
In this line, when we look at the SSD column, are these numbers representing people who are teachers or people with advanced degrees who are working for SSD, or are these all?
These are all staff. These are all staff. And then the DSE would be our teacher workforce. Yeah.
So my, my question is, in reference to the strategy and the data, are we looking to set goals or is it simply intent?
Well, we would like to see an increase, so our goal would be to.
And if so, then goals usually have more specific in reference to time and a specific amount that we are looking to accomplish.
We are, we are hoping to increase by 2022, but we have not set a specific percentage. And as we get into my next slide, I can talk to you a little bit like what some of the barriers are to that. That some of the realities of diversity in education is we're, we're not the only school district that's hoping to increase our diversity. That the, the most recent data set that we have is from the, that's from the US Department of Education, was compiled in 2016. And when we look at that, we can see that the data points that they used in 2012, only 8% of white students in the nation were choosing to major in education, and only 5% of black students were interested in majoring in the field of education. And when you look at those that then actually chose to enroll in programs, in the 99-2000 school year, all education programs in the nation, 79% of the students were white and 10% were black. You move 11 years forward and we've, you can see that there's only a slight increase. And when you look at the number of black students enrolled in teacher preparation programs in the state of Missouri, it averages between 500 and 1,000 in the entire state. When we look at our HBCU in the nation. When we look at our HBCU in the nation and our teacher preparation program, only 16% of students that choose to attend an HBCU choose to major in education.
HBCU, yeah.
Historically black colleges and universities, sorry.
Thanks, Jean.
So, yes. So when we take a look at the numbers, it's very, very difficult in order to expect to recruit them out of college. We have to start before college and get them interested in majoring in education and special education in particular. 82% of special education teachers in public schools in the nation are white and less than 2% of the nation's special education teachers are black males. So we've got, we have to be cautious in setting really high goals when there aren't candidates out there for us to pick from. We really need to focus our energy on how is it that we get individuals interested from diverse backgrounds to major in education and specifically special education. Out of the two historically black colleges and universities in the state of Missouri, Harris-Stowe and Lincoln, only one of them, you can get a degree in special education and that's at Lincoln, which is outside of the St. Louis region. We can look farther at developing relationships if we move into the next slide. You know, we talked about compiling that demographic data and expanding our targeted recruitment and looking at these collaborative relationships with universities and to develop those relationships with our historically black colleges and universities. However, when we look at the percentage of individuals who are studying there that are interested in education and at the length of travel that many of them would have to make and, you know, when you go outside of the St. Louis area and the Missouri only having two HBCUs, you know, you're looking at the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff, going down to Fisk, which is in Tennessee in the Nashville area, going to Jackson State in Mississippi. You know, you have to convince individuals not only to come into the degree field, but to move to the St. Louis area. It doesn't help our case at all that the NAACP issued the first ever travel advisory for an entire state in 2017 telling that individuals to exercise extreme caution when they travel to the state of Missouri. And as a result of that, is it, voters, I never know how to say the travel company's name, they put Missouri on the no-travel list in 2018. Voters did, as a result of the NAACP travel advisory. So we have to do a lot of work, not just as a district, but as a region on convincing individuals of color that St. Louis is a good place to come and a good place to work. So we're hoping to do some marketing at Special School District on diversity and talking to our diverse staff, as Dr. Cunio referenced before, on why did you come and why did you say? So we can take some of that information to use in our marketing.
Well, I'd like to say that one of the things that we face as well is historical black colleges, which was addressed by President Trump in reference to the funding. What has happened in HBCUs in reference to limited funding, that means that they also have limited capabilities of being able to have certain programs or certain classes that they can teach. And so they're having to then cut back because of that. So this is the first time that there's been, one, a figure that is a mandatory figure for a period of time, a 10 or 15 year period of time, which then allows for the schools to be able to expand their, their program offerings to students.
Right.
So you may find, too, that there is a lesser, in some of those colleges, opportunity financially for them to be able to have-
Right.
-this particular course involved in their curriculum.
And to your point, if they have to cut funding and they have to cut programs, they cut programs where enrollment is very low.
That's right.
And when you're looking at education and special education specifically, oftentimes those programs are the first to be cut.
I was also looking into diversity on the other. I find that, that's much more striking. And when you look at it percentage-wise, 1.9 is others at SSD and the company is 10.2. That's five times, we're, that's 500%, where-
Right.
-the difference in black at SSD and St. Louis County is 50%. We don't recruit anyone of any other nationality?
Well, we don't have a targeted recruitment plan for diversity at this time, but when we develop that, it'll be for all races, obviously, yes.
I'm guessing we would have Hispanic, Bosnian? I'm trying to think of why we would have 10%. We don't have a large Hispanic population.
No. I can get those numbers broken down more specifically and just-
I was just curious, what's under that because-
Right, I can get that and put that in the Friday packet.
Yeah, I was just curious.
And I think, too, you'll find that their particular focus oftentimes is more geared towards other kinds of businesses in reference to their particular desires of service in the community. You'll find that there probably is fewer people who feel that they have that particular need to be served in their communities opposed to other kinds of applications and making money opposed to these kinds of jobs.
I just looked, you know, I was just looking at the numbers, the numbers were striking.
And so then really, the last slide, I, move to the next one. Just looking at our reporting structure, obviously, you know, we're, the diversity data that is in this packet is our 1920 diversity data, so we'll have the 2021 diversity data, retention data that we can bring forward as early as the October board meeting, and then obviously our vacancy data for all staff positions. We include that in my weekly report in the Friday packet.
And I do want to tell you, that is appreciated, Julie, for the report.
I will let Dan Kelly know. I'll compile that data.
I like that.
And that's it. Any questions other than-
It's never a surprise.
That's the point. Yes. Thank you. Okay, so our last presentation, Dr. Bauer.
Heading for you.
My, 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 look what the wind blew in.
Getting correct, hey?
Stay away, stay away. I'm going to talk with you all about strategic planning. When we talk first about what strategic planning, well, the purpose of the presentation, to give you on what processes we're planning on following in the district and also obtain some feedback and some input from board members. And there's one item in particular toward the end when I'll be asking for some feedback from the board. Next slide. Let's talk about what strategic planning is. Strategic planning is deliberate, it's disciplined, it results in actions that the district is going to perform. We talked about what we are, what we do, why we do it, where we're going in the future. Next slide. Another way to look at it is that it gives us a pattern of decisions to make about how we are, where our goals are going to be, what we're going to reach for. It defines what we're going to do, what kind of organization the district plans to be, and how the district intends to impact its communities. Next slide. When we go through the planning process, we ask four questions. And if you answer these four questions, you will be able to develop a plan. Where are we now? These are our baseline data. Where do we want to be? How are we going to get there? And how are we going to know it? Next slide. And don't forget, as we go through the process, we have to talk about whether any group in our community and our student body is excluded. Are we giving the same opportunity to every student in our district to be successful? And do our policies, our procedures, what we do every day, address differences in groups? So this is a picture of the whole process and we'll be, I'll be going through each one of these in a little bit more detail. Far to the left, where are we now? Those are the types of informations and the types of, and the types of information we'll be gathering, the types of analyses. Where do we want to go? Students, staff, diversity, equity. How do we get there? What's our mission? What is, what are our guiding principles? How are we going to do things and how are we going to pay for it? And finally, how are we going to measure it at the end? Those are our timelines along the bottom. Next slide. So how to get it done, the big questions. First, we have to select a team. We want the team to be representative of all the parties in the district. We want to orient that team as to what we're doing, why we're doing it, what they're doing, why they're doing it, what processes we're going to follow as we work through this. So we have some uniformity, some consistency in the data that we discover as we go through the process. Next slide. This slide is a little backwards, but we have, as I saw, as I mentioned before, we have several areas that we need to collect data on. Finances, facilities, all the human resources functions, student performance, so many things, input from our staff. So we're going to divide, divide up into several small workgroups. We will be looking at those data, analyzing it, working with me to perform SWOT analyses where appropriate to a pest analysis. Pest analysis measures the political environment, the economics, the environment, and the technology that comes into place. Those committees will report to a 20, 10 to 20 person committee, and that will be our planning committee. And that committee will generate the plan and will be reporting it to the board. Going to be looking at those processes being facilitated by me and by a board member, or more accurately, by a board member and me, if I'm going to be more grammatically correct. Next slide, please. Once we get our team set up and going, we talk about where we are now. What's our identity of the district? What are our values? What are our guiding principles? We will complete what they call environmental scans. Next slide. Environmental scans are reviews of our internal and our external environment. We are, we are looking at, working with Unicom ARC, who has joined with an organization called Creative Entourage, to get input from our internal and external stakeholders and to perform a cultural assessment of our district. What is the culture of SSD? What is the culture of our staff?
Well, we are, we already decided that we want to use Unicom ARC.
We have talked with them. We have not decided for sure that we're going to use them, but that's what we're going to talk about later.
Okay. The only reason why is, I remember when they helped us with a, it was one of our tax levies, and they were not helpful. Now, that was 15, 20 years ago. My guess is their leadership has changed and the whole organization's- They were not helpful.
Our internal environmental scan will also look at things like the finances of the districts, various factors with human resources, review of the organization, our facilities, and most important, student outcomes. Next slide. External environmental scan, we'll be getting external stakeholder input, information about our service area. You know, what do we do in our community? Is there something we should not be doing that we are, something we should be doing that we're not? Our legislative environment. What's the funding picture like? Any laws out there that are going to have an impact on us? Accreditation, compliance, not just MSIP, but other areas of accreditation. Adult ed needs to be accredited, other programs. Next slide, please. So once we get all that information, we do our gap analyses and we do, look at where we want to be. We want to be effective and efficient. Effective, you are effective when you do the right things. You are efficient when you do them the right way. What about equity, diversity, equality, student outcomes, finances, our relationships with people inside and outside of our organization? Next slide. Once we decide that, we got to decide how we're going to get there. What has to happen for the district to get there? What do we need to do? What do, how are we going to do it? How are we going to pay for it and otherwise resources? And how does it all align with the mission and the core values of the district? Next slide. How are we going to know when we get there? Those are our goals, our targets, our action steps, our timelines, our reporting structure. Next slide. Here's a picture of the process. We start with analyzing the data, we develop the plan, and then we go into a continuous improvement cycle, implementing, monitoring, reporting, evaluating, revising. Next slide, please. Here's our timeline. We'd like to have all of our data collected and analyzed by winter break. Then we do our gap analyses. Then we work on our strategies, our measures and our alignment, identify our resources, the resources plan, and then it's finished. Next slide, please. When it's finished, our, we're thinking right now is we will work with an organization called Magnetize, which has worked with several districts, branding, messaging, working on getting our identity out there, working on a rollout plan for this. Next slide, please. Here's another picture.
This is an interesting picture.
I wrote down. We start in the fall, do our data analysis. We've talked before about our lens of equity. We need to look at everything through that lens of equity. We continue until ultimately we achieve, our trip is finished when we have student success. Next slide, please. So this is where I'm going to ask the board for some feedback, because we have two options for doing our, getting our stakeholder input predominantly. We have committees that I've talked about before left. We have our focus groups, and I mentioned Unicom ARC. And then, once we get it all finished, we do our, our branding and our messaging. So that's one, that is the first option, to use Unicom ARC. Next slide. Our next option is that those things that we would be working with Unicom ARC to do, we do internally. The other two parts of the graphic are the same. Now, our, our recommendation is that we use Unicom ARC, if not them, some other external group. One of the issues when you get input from internal stakeholders, you always run the risk of the stakeholders giving the input having some bias toward the people seeking it. In other words, oh, what do they really want us to say? Or what are they really looking for? How much are they going to use what we tell them? Why are they, are, what, out of all the things that could be asking us, why are they asking us these questions? If we have a recognized external provider for that, most of those questions go away. So our recommendation is that we have someone else do the input from our internal and our external stakeholders. The rest of the environmental scan will be performed internally. Next slide. So, let's hear from the board.
What are our options?
What are the downsides of option one? In other words, is it worth the cost factor?
Cost.
Groups that are available for this.
I think the biggest downside would be the cost. You always run the risk when you use an outside vendor that they're going to cost you a lot of money and do all this stuff and not give you what you're looking for. We've already talked with them. I think we have made it pretty clear to them what we are looking for, the scope of their work, the focus of their work. So, so that's the biggest. I'm sorry?
Did they give you a number? We're talking with them again tomorrow, wanted to make sure.
And answer the number. Can we also get a timeline on what they're going to deliver and what they're going to deliver?
Yes, yes.
Because that was our problem with them before.
The timeline and the deliverables are very important because they're crucial to this whole process.
I, I have one other question, and I am not saying this is not. Right now, COVID seems to be dominating everyone's lives. Our big issue is can we get a kid back to school?
Yes.
Our big issue is how much have they lost because they weren't in school? No matter how good our teachers are, no matter how good our services, they're not as good as them.
Right. Absolutely.
And I'm not knocking a single teacher for that. I, I think they're doing the elements work to do what they're doing. Can we, during the cost factor, can we put aside this much energy on something else before this whole COVID situation is, at least we can turn the corner?
I think we're at the point where we need to do something like this with our district. It's also important recognizing COVID-19, recognizing its impact on our students and their families and our community. The district is still here, and the district is still operating. And I think we need to look at it in terms of, let's continue our work, and we have to do it in a different way, and we have to recognize all these other factors that are impacting our community and our parents and our families and our kids. But the district still needs to move forward.
I, I do get concerned, though, about the effectiveness of the work groups and the subcommittees and the information gathering when so much of it will be virtual or, you know, it's not going to be nearly as effective.
I'm not saying.
In this environment.
I would not measure, you know, I think we could get a snapshot of what things are for right now, but this is a once-in-a-hundred-year.
Yes.
And I, and I, you know, and while I am not saying this is not important, I'm not saying that, I'm just wondering, is our data going to be skewed?
I, I think, you know, what Dr. Bauer was saying too, is I feel there's, this is a critical time in order for us to make sure that we're reaching out to our constituents and to admitting our families, our students. And I feel like I, we, they're not waiting for us to stay idle. They're wanting us to hear, how are you adjusting and working through this? And to me, this is a perfect opportunity for us to make sure that we are putting our ear to the level that is helping us make sure that we're adjusting and moving forward with what the need is and what, or what the perceived need is for our families, you know? So I, I, I want us to balance out what we've done as a, as an organization and respect the, you know, the historical pieces of it, but we also know during this pandemic that there are some pieces that we have to look at and how we provide education. And once we do come back into face-to-face, what does that look like? And what does a virtual option look like? Are we looking at options outside of what we typically have done for our families? And I think it's a great opportunity. I think when we did the deal, when we did the district's learning plan, feedback from our staff and from our families, it was, it helped us get better at what we were doing to plan for this fall. And that's what I see with this, too. This is an opportunity for us to hear what's going well, where do we absolutely need to change, what can we control, and how does it help us focus in on what is important for us as a district to support our students and to support our families.
I'm just saying that we need to be fluid.
Yes.
Yes.
That we are not putting things in stone during this period.
Right.
Because, first of all, I just don't want to overload staff with one more thing, because I believe they're being pushed to the brink right now. And, you know, by the time that they're, they're, they're learning how to teach virtual. I mean, this wasn't something here regarding school.
That's correct.
And, and I also find that in, when it comes to periods of high disaster, whether it be hurricanes, I don't want to test the anxiety level of a community. I don't want to, and I'm, and I may get information that may be somewhat skewed. Now, if this is going to take a year, I'd like to know, you may want to take a measure within the next couple of months, then take another measure.
Yes.
Let's say, hopefully, March, February, when, hopefully by then, everybody's back to school, we have, you know, some handle on this.
Right.
But I, I think our info.
Yes.
Our data is going to be different from now till then.
Yeah, I agree. And I hope you're like, the strategic plan should be based on COVID at all. I mean, yeah, this is our long-term strategic plan for the district, you know, irrespective of COVID issues.
My response is going to be, the district is continuing. We still have a budget. We still have facilities. We still have many things in place that we need to continue to maintain and improve in spite of COVID-19.
Right. And we will go on after COVID.
It's a big piece that we are dealing with right now, and again, it has a huge impact on our students and their families and our staff, but at the same time, the district needs to continue to improve and grow.
I think that, I agree with Superintendent Kennedy that we're at a point to have it reassessed, and I take that, you know, from a simple standpoint, as I've said, this situation calls that all contracts have to be renegotiated. People have to reassess what new normal actually ends up being, because that's a term that we have heard. In this case, it also means to us, and I mentioned this in our conversation, you know, how special is special? And that becomes a choice that we make in reference to how we go about defining who we are moving forward in the future, knowing that there is going to be a new normal and knowing that we will be in a position and be viewed as an organization to take that lead on urging in what new normal is. My question to you, Paul, I guess, is in reference to what you mentioned about the second option. So what I gathered from that was the in-house situation could be compilation of stubborn individuals. You know, I would. Stubborn to the point where even if an outsider comes in, because if they have these feelings about themselves within their own group, how much is that going to then be conveyed to an outsider that comes in, in this case, who's working for a fee? And at the end of the day, if the stubbornness is so strong, then does it cause them to kowtow to the stubbornness? Are they going to be someone who in turn will make a bid to communicate? That particular mindset, that particular school of thought for where we're talking about going is not going to be applicable and get in the study. I know people are going to accept that.
I wouldn't characterize it so much as stubbornness, as just that risk of perceived bias. You say things to your neighbor that you wouldn't say to your father, or you say things to your uncle that you wouldn't say to your father. And that's what, that's kind of the situation we have here, that if we have someone from outside coming in who doesn't know these people, has no personal stake in what they say, that removes that possibility of Paul Bauer asking this question to somebody, although Paul Bauer used to be Deputy Superintendent, and he's still got to be ear Dr. Keenan, whether he does or doesn't.
But the purpose of the committee, I mean, the most critical part of this whole thing is the selection of those committee members.
That is correct.
And so, I mean, they're really just information sources. It's not so much even opinion sources as it is.
That is correct.
Information sources.
Yes. What I see, in addition to these teams, there's a leadership team, which is the cabinet plus me. And I kind of see a kind of a house and senate relationship, where this committee may come up with some conclusions, some recommendations, that sort of thing, which are completely different than what the leadership team would come up. And just how, when you have a law that the House passes or the Senate passes, the two come together and work out agreement and common ground, that's what I see the leadership team and the CCF team doing, or the, the strategic plan team doing.
I guess I see representatives of the ELT team on that committee, so it's not back and forth. They are, it should be a part of that process to begin with.
Okay.
So what is the relationship to you, Paul, of the strategic plan and the CCF then? How does, what is, what is?
Strategic plan is much bigger than the CCF. The CCF could be seen as part of the strategic plan. The strategic plan takes into all, takes into account all of the factors that affect the district. One of those factors being the comprehensive school improvement.
Okay, but when we do this, we, we still need, well, at one point, we are still going to need to have work study or retreat call, whatever you want. You know, outside committee can develop a mission and vision.
Yes.
Or, or.
Yes.
That has to come from the board.
Yes.
That'll be in the spirit of coming together.
That, I mean, the board clearly use the information, the data.
Yes.
To figure out what their mission and vision is and see if they want to revise it.
Yes.
But I can't have an outside party come up with that decision. Or even a splinter group come up with that.
That's not. The plan is that the board needs to get together and review and parse those mission statements, those core values, all of those things.
Those will still be part of the. I just feel like we have enough internal knowledge, Paul, that if those committee members were chosen carefully and properly, that you're going to mine them. I don't know why they would be more effective at mining that information than we would be the district.
I think they can mine all of the information except for hearing comments from those stakeholders.
I just think that, looking at option one, wants to ask if this is something that we will be taking on, and just when us being transparent and that we're not trying to manipulate the data, that we are purposely listening to a neutral ear, and have another party to, you know, just look at us from the outside here. I, that's just my opinion, but I, I do agree. I know we have some very talented staff members, that if we chose option two, they would be good. I think it would be all the more richer if we, we had that option one in place, just to have some, some other eyes that, you know, that people think, that's not in the midst of everything to just come in and look and, and help us plan for it.
And I, I guess I would argue that the strategic plan is a living document for the organization, and that's something that really should be developed within the organization. I'm not even, even really sure how much stakeholder input is important to perfectly honest. I mean, it's our vision of where we want the organization to go, with, with some input, but I, I'm a little concerned it would be the wrong proportion of, of other input versus the great minds here. And so, see.
See, I, I wouldn't see them, yeah, I wouldn't see them as providing data. Because you're right. An organization has to determine itself.
I mean, that's the leadership's job, is to determine what its strategic.
But it's also making sure we're not missing key information from some of the stakeholders on where we're currently at and where do we need to go.
Yeah, I, I don't, I used to have a term called solid system where, you know, it was, you only thought, you know, it was one person's thought and that was it, you know? And, and if, and if you're that way, you can only think one way, you don't realize there's other existences. I, I think it's great to get their input, but the decision has to remain.
Well, I, I just think we need to be careful, because I go back to our original equity study that we did how long ago? And we spent so much time with input and outside information in getting stuff in and looking at everything, that we came up with nothing. So I just think that that's a concern.
I think, that's what I go back to, Paul, and I mentioned about the stubbornness.
Yeah.
My saying is, and I, and I say this because being a person who's only a recent transplant here, I've had to understand, there's a St. Louis way, there's a way, and then there's a St. Louis way. And I'm, and sometimes perhaps what you're suggesting in that situation is, sometimes we might have to get out of, and we talk about it all the time, we bring in people from different places as a way of being able to take and expand our viewpoints and our ways of understanding how to accomplish things. But also, we have a tendency, that once they get into our midst, is to conform them to the St. Louis way. And, and so I think that, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, the, the suggestion he's making toward having someone else goes directly to that point of not necessarily feeling that are having that particular pressure involved in it. Like I say, I've come to understand, and I just say myself, that there's a way, and then there's a St. Louis way. And if you don't do it the St. Louis way, you're going to get the resistance to whatever it is that you're trying to accomplish.
I'd like to see, if we go to some kind of arc, if we go to whatever, whatever grouping that we're going to do, I'd like to see the duties, or, or what they're going to provide to us way before we end up offering a contract.
Enterprise.
Enterprise. I, I would want to make, I want to make sure that I know what I'm getting ahead of time. And I hate to go back, as you said, to the equity study.
Yeah.
By the time we get done with the equity study, all the data that we saw was our data.
Regurgitated.
And it was, it was regurgitated. It was absolutely worthless.
That's not the plan with this. That's not the intent. The intent is to get some information that we can use to improve our district. And, and the input from the internal and external stakeholders is just one piece of that information.
Would it be possible, Paul, for, you know, for a decision is made on the organization or not, just to see a copy of their proposal?
Yes.
Of what they plan on doing?
Yes.
And I feel, like, you know, and I'm not saying that what you're saying is wrong at all. I would just feel a lot more comfortable if I knew what we're paying for and what we want.
Yes.
We got burned once, I, with equity, and we got burned once by some kind of arc once before. I won't get burned again.
Sure, we can do that.
So we, we're planned to bring that to the next board meeting, so we will send you that proposal to do that, and we'll also send you the Magnetize proposal.
Would you, if, if, if we already have this proposal, just so that I'm not overwhelmed, us old people don't like being overwhelmed, and, so I'm not overwhelmed, is it wouldn't be possible if we could have this, if it's already written out sometime this week, so I'd have a chance to look at it this weekend instead of.
I believe Dr. Keenan's got it, so.
Okay, great. I think it would give us all a chance to look at it for a period of time before we got the entire agenda and have to do that all.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Is that it? Anybody have anything they want to bring up? All right, peoples. It is 8:12. Go home.
Thank you.
Can we take them? Are the journal on there? Do I have a motion to, write a motion to the journal on one of these?
No, don't.
I, I refer to my data, the 10%.